Once again, we now open up our regular meeting for December the 23rd. We'll be led in prayer by Madam Clerk. Following the prayer, we'll be led in Pledge of Allegiance by Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, I am not in chambers, so do you still want me to do the pledge since you are in chambers?
We'll just do the prayer. We'll just do the prayer.
All right. Oh God almighty, wisdom and justice through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted and judgment decreed, assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we preside. Amen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you proceed with roll call?
Counselors Williams. Morgan.
Present.
West.
Present.
Mayor Kirkland.
Present. Move for the approval of minutes.
I move.
I second.
Any comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams. Counselor Williams. Counselor Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes. At this time, we'll open up the lines and see if we have any public comments. At this time, Mr. Solicitor, are there any public comments?
Your Honor, there are no public comments on action items at this point. There is a general public comment for the end of the meeting.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania. Resolution, resolution of the City of Chester fixing a revenue neutral preliminary tax rate for the 2021 tax year in compliance with the requirements of the Consolidated County Assessment Law for the year following the implementation of a countywide reassessment. Whereas the County of Delaware, the county was ordered by the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas to conduct and implement and countywide reassessment of all real properties located within the county. And whereas the county completed such reassessment in calendar year 2020, and the revised assessments for real properties located within the county shall take effect for the 2021 tax year. And whereas, Section 8823, the Consolidated County Assessment Law requires that for the initial year in which a countywide reassessment becomes effective, each taxing district levying its real estate taxes on a revised assessment rose for the first time shall reduce each tax rate levied by the taxing district if necessary, so that the total amount of taxes levied for that year against the real properties contained in the duplicate for that rate does not exceed the total amount it levied on the properties in the preceding year. Each tax rate shall be fixed at a figure that will accomplish this purpose. Fifty-three PACS, Section 8823. And whereas, for purposes of compliance with the requirements of the Consolidated County Assessment Law, the City of Chester, the city hereby desires to fix a preliminary tax rate for tax year 2021 on all real properties located in the city that will result in revenue neutral tax revenues equal to the amount of real property taxes levied by the city for the tax year 2020. Now therefore be hereby resolved by Chester City Council of the City of Chester as follows. Number one, for the 2020 tax year, the city levy a real estate property tax rate at, excuse me, of thirty-two point seven seven one two mils on all taxable real properties located in the city, which were assessed at the aggregate amount of properties in the aggregate amount of three hundred twenty-one million, three hundred sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four. Number two, the county has notified the city that as a result of the countywide reassessment completed in 2020, effective as of the 2021 tax year, all taxable real estate located within the city has an aggregate assessment value of one billion, one hundred sixteen million, five hundred thirty thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven. Number three, the ten million, five hundred thousand aggregate 2020 taxes levied on taxable real properties in the city divided by the one billion, one hundred sixteen million, five hundred thirty thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven, 2021 aggregate assessed value of all taxable real properties in the city results in a preliminary revenue neutral tax for the tax year 2021 of point zero zero nine four zero four one mils. Number four, the 2021 preliminary revenue neutral real property tax rate is hereby fixed at nine point four zero four one mils. And number five, by a separate and specific vote, the city may adopt a different milage tax rate for tax year 2021, but such milage rate may not exceed ten point three four four five mils, which is a hundred and ten percent of the preliminary revenue neutral tax rate set forth in Section Four above.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams. Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the county, excuse me, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby grant permission and authorize the issuance of a road opening permit to Adelphia Gateway for the installation of new pipeline within the City of Chester at the following locations. Number one, PA State Route 291 from City Line to Flower Street. And number two, private property on Flower Street from PA State Route 291 to Delaware Avenue, which is crossing Front Street and Delaware Avenue. Additional work includes the following. Number one, proposed Pico meter station at Delaware Avenue within existing Pico facility. Further, the city engineer is agreeable to approval of this project under following conditions. Number one, Adelphia Gateway obtains any required zoning approvals from the Chester City Planning Department. Number two, Adelphia Gateway obtains a road opening, sidewalk and curb permit from the City of Chester Streets Department. Number three, Adelphia Gateway performs a half mil and overlay of any disturbed asphalt surfaces within the city right of way. Number four, Adelphia Gateway provides a traffic control plan in accordance with Pindot Publication 213. And number five, Adelphia Gateway provide documentation that they have obtained all required permits from the PA DEP and all required permission from property owners impacted by the project. Even further, the following temporary and or permanent easement agreements are required and shall be coordinated with the Solicitor's Office. Number one, temporary workspace agreement along PA State Route 291 at the following locations. A, Lewis Street. B, Hay Street. C, Bunning Street. D, Wilson Street. E, Mill Street. F, Ward Street. G, Palmer Street. H, Iowa Street. I, Townsend Street. J, Watts Street. K, Engel Street. And L, Byram Street. And number two, permanent easement agreements at the following locations. A, Front Street. And B, Delaware Avenue.
I move.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams. Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize a proper city official to submit an application to the Delaware County Demolition Program, Blighted Property Demolition Fund, to obtain funds for the demolition of the following properties. Property address, eleven fourteen Potter Street, folio number forty-nine dash zero two dash zero one four three one dash zero zero. And eleven sixteen Potter Street, folio number forty-nine dash zero two dash zero one four three two dash zero zero. Further, it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to execute all necessary documents on behalf of the City of Chester.
I move.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the action of the mayor of the City of Chester in a declaration of a weather emergency for the event which occurred on December sixteenth, 2020, in directing the Emergency Management Coordinator to coordinate and direct all activities of the emergency response and to take all action deemed necessary to respond to the emergency pursuant to Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code, thirty-five PACS, Section seven five zero one.
I move.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams. Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby reappoint the following individuals as members of the Stormwater Authority of the City of Chester Board, terms to expire as stated. Livia Smith, October twenty-eighth, 2026. Joan Neal, October twenty-eighth, 2025. Joy Taylor, October twenty-eighth, 2026. And Daubrey Green, October twenty-eighth, 2026.
I move.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams. Morgan.
Yes.
West. Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that the organization of the Chester City Council will be held on Monday, January fourth, 2021, at ten AM. City Council Chambers, One Fourth Street, Chester, Pennsylvania, nineteen oh thirteen, for the purposes of reorganization and appointments to various positions. Further, that it does hereby authorize the city clerk to advertise said organization meeting.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams. Morgan.
Yes.
West. Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does approve and order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and as shown on expenditure approval list dated December twenty-first, 2020, attached here to and made a part hereof, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams. Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Bill number six, first reading was on December ninth, 2020. Ordinance number five of 2020. An ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, pursuant to the authority granted by the Home Room Charter, reenacting the earned income tax for the year 2021 as set forth in Article 303 of the Codified Ordinances of Chester, Pennsylvania, nineteen seventy-eight, as supplemented and amended in its entirety without substantial change except for an amendment to Section three oh three point zero two, entitled, imposition of tax, to impose a tax of two percent for 2021 for general revenue purposes on salaries, wages, commissions, net profits and other compensation earned by non-residents of the City of Chester for work done or services performed or rendered in the City of Chester, and to establish the earned income tax rate at three point seven five for 2021 on salaries, wages, commissions, net profits and other compensation earned, compensation, excuse me, earned by residents of the City of Chester, providing for the administration and enforcement of the ordinance and imposing penalties for violations thereof.
I move that we pass Bill number six, I'm sorry, number five on its last and final reading.
I second.
It is Bill number six.
Okay, Bill number six, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
On my second that we pass Bill number six on its last and final reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams. Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Bill number seven, first reading was on December ninth, 2020. Ordinance number six of 2020. An ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, pursuant to the authority granted by the Home Room Charter, reenacting without substantial change for the year 2021, the local services tax as set forth in Article 305 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chester, Pennsylvania, nineteen seventy-eight, as supplemented and amended in its entirety, which imposes a tax for general revenue purposes upon the privilege of engaging in occupation within the corporate limits of the City of Chester at the rate of fifty-two dollars per year.
I move that we pass Bill number seven on its last and final reading.
I second that we pass Bill number seven on its last and final reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams. Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Bill number eight, first reading was on December ninth, 2020. Ordinance number seven of 2020. Ordinance as amended, an ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, enacting the tax rate for the year 2021 on all real property at nine point four zero four one mils and fixing the library tax at point four zero one seven mils.
I move that we pass Bill number eight on its last and final reading.
I move, I second that we pass Bill number eight on its last and final reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams. Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Bill number nine, first reading was on December ninth, 2020. Ordinance number eight of 2020. An ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending subsection nine two five point zero two one, entitled fees of Article nine two five, entitled refuse collection of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chester, nineteen seventy-eight, as supplemented and amended by increasing the fee to two hundred dollars of subparts A one and A two, and repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I move that we pass Bill number nine on its last and final reading.
I second that we pass Bill number nine on its last and final reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams. Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Bill number ten, first reading was on December ninth, 2020. Ordinance number nine of 2020. An ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, pursuant to the authority granted by the Home Room Charter, reenacting without substantial change the business privilege tax for the year 2021 as set forth in Article three oh seven of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chester, nineteen seventy-eight, as supplemented and amended in its entirety, which imposes a tax for general revenue purposes upon persons, firms, companies and corporation engaging in certain business within the City of Chester except for the amendment to subsection three oh seven point zero two A, entitled rate and basis of tax of Section three oh seven point zero two, entitled tax for general revenue purposes of said business privilege tax to set the said rate of tax to three point zero mils for retail and two point zero mils for wholesale and repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I move that we pass Bill number ten on its last and final.
I second that we pass Bill number ten on its last and final reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams. Morgan.
Yes.
West. Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Your Honor, before we proceed to the presentation, do I have your permission to propose a motion to authorize the advertisement of the addendum to bid documents for trash?
Yes, Mr. Citizen.
Thank you. The following motion would be proposed. A motion to advertise, to authorize the advertisement of an addendum. Addendum number one to the bid documents to all bidders for the contract for garbage and recyclables and refuse. The bid opening date will be changed from December twenty-third, 2020 today to December thirtieth, 2020, ten AM, at the city's last council meeting for this year. Do we have such a motion?
I move.
I second.
Any questions, concerns? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams. Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. At this time, we have our presentation. Mr. Galati?
Good morning. I believe Anya, I sent Anya a copy of the map. I think that'll be enough for me to go over the presentation and where we are with this project. And, you know, I want to start off that the city received a grant in 2017 from Pima to develop a flood mitigation plan. As part of that project, Asia, I worked with Asia from the Grants Coordinator and myself, I've been working on this project for about two and a half years now, developing this report that essentially provides a blueprint for, and then also a guideline for areas that flood within the cities. And in preparation of the report, coordinated with Kimberly Clark, Del Cora, talked to Harris, and some of the businesses on the waterfront, worked with the fire department to identify some of the areas in the city that are subject to flooding. And essentially, what the report is, is it provides, identifies the areas in the city that flood, provides potential alternatives to mitigate the flooding and has, at the end of the report, there's a list of action items that the city should do in conjunction with some of the other entities within the city, like, you know, I talk about, you know, the Stormwater Authority, some of the things that they're doing that are, you know, benefiting flooding within the city. And that's, that's all detailed in the report. It's actually, a copy of it is available. I had, it was a pretty large file, so I had to upload it to Google Drive, and I don't know if everybody was able to download it. So ultimately today, this is just the initial presentation to present it to council and ultimately, you know, get any feedback that mayor, you know, you may or may not have, or any additional items you want to get addressed with the report. One thing I would note is that the grant deadline is in, for actual complete, the work within the grant is March of 2021. That does not mean that we have to stop working on this project. It just means that I need to get everything finalized with the funder, which is Pima, and they actually do have a copy of the plan and the report. And I've seen, I've received favorable response from them. So essentially, I'm going to go through the map that I put together, which details the areas within the city that are subject to flooding. I'd like to note that the city has, you know, is a waterfront community. We have Ridley Creek, Chester Creek and Stony Creek, all of which have their own floodplains. Also, tidally influenced areas. Sorry, my phone keeps ringing. All of which are tidally influenced. And ultimately, I'm just going to start off and go through some of the areas. You know, identify two types of flooding that happens in the city. There's the flooding that occurs from the Hundred Year Storm. Properties within the floodplain. And then there's also areas in the city that are subject to like a flash flood. For example, on two ninety-one, the flooding on two ninety-one is not essentially all due to title influence from the Delaware River, but when you get a heavy, heavy rainstorm, the pipes and infrastructure on two ninety-one sometimes can't handle the amount of runoff, or an inlet gets clogged. You might get some, you know, an inlet could get leaves blocking the grate and therefore you could get a flood and the fire department oftentimes would have to remove a car or do a rescue during these, during these events. So just to go through some of the areas, and I'll start at the left of the screen. Over at Stony Creek, an area that frequently floods is Ninth and Meadow Lane. In the report, I talk about ways, and I think the Stormwater Authority is doing some work in that area now to upgrade the infrastructure, provide some green infrastructure alternatives that will ultimately benefit that area, but there's also always more work you can do. And I talk about maybe doing some streambank stabilization, additional stormwater management holding areas and additional infrastructure to mitigate the flooding that occurs at Stony Creek. Essentially, what happens is when you get a heavy rainfall, the culvert that crosses Ninth Street backs up and it floods the roadway. Memorial Park, I'm going to keep going, so if you want to stop me, feel free to stop me. Memorial Park is another area which is also a target area that's actually, you know, known for flooding. It accepts a lot of stormwater runoff from upstream communities, Chester Township in particular. And that stormwater in that park, it'll basically flood the park out for days. There's a large culvert that goes underneath the railroad track and it, you know... There's a large culvert that goes underneath the railroad track, and it, you know, if we get a heavy rainstorm, it could, you know, we've had instances where the culvert, there's a, there's an orifice on the culvert, a flow, basically a flow restrictor, if to be, you know, just simplification, simplified terms, that if that ever comes off, that actually will surcharge and flood the downstream properties. So what's happening there? The report talks about, Stormwater Authority understand has a project where they're looking to construct a large basin, and also Del Cora, with that being downstream and tributary to a combined sewer system. Del Cora is actually working on a plan now to run a brand-new stormwater management pipe out to their regulator down in the Delaware River so that the stormwater runoff doesn't go back into the combined sewer system. One of the major areas that flood within the city is Route two ninety one. I identified various locations on two ninety one. One particular that was brought to me by Kimberly Clark is Second and Welsh. Recommend some upgrades in that area for upgrading some culverts or some stormwater management piping, which would help mitigate the flooding, but that is also close to the Delaware River, which is tidally, tidally influenced. So there's only so much you can do in that area, but that would benefit, of course, you know, major business within the city of Chester. Along two ninety one, identify other areas, talk about potential green infrastructural alternatives. I referenced the climate adaptation plan and the GSI plan that was completed by C Grant, Pennsylvania C Grant, as some alternatives that we can implement or, you know, Stormwater Authority or whatever entity could implement to mitigate flooding. Another big location, as I'm, as you're going through the map, is Park Manor. We know that that area frequently floods. There's, I think there's approximately fifty or so homes that are impacted. Very often, the fire department and the police and public works have to get involved, evacuate residents prior to a large-scale flooding event, and that puts a strain of resources on the city. Flooding in Park Manor is due to rainfall from a one-hundred-year storm event, and as we know, we are the downstream end of the, we're all three of Chester Creek, Ridley Creek, and Stony Creek connected to the Delaware River, so that accepts a lot of water upstream, which is ultimately the, you know, the, which ultimately generates a lot of the stormwater runoff that causes flooding within Park Manor. And ultimately, there's only so much we can do, but I did recommend some, some infrastructure upgrades. There's been acquisitions in the past, and it's been discussed previously, but that would require homeowner buy-in. There's reworking the berm. There's a berm actually along the creek. There's some work that we could do on the berm to rework the berm to help during a large, a small magnitude storm. I do have a picture on the cover sheet of my report that shows Parker Manor floods significantly. I think some of the homes could flood up to twelve feet from their basement floor, so that is very significant, and it is a strain of resources on the city. And it's something that we definitely want to look at and look for ways to improve not only the, you know, quality of life for the residents, but flooding, ways for, like, to implement some green infrastructure, some stormwater basins to mitigate the long-term impacts of the flooding. Air Park, you know, that's, that is home of our levee. Just recently, there were two projects completed there. A couple, actually, probably, I would say about two or three projects there. The Stormwater Authority completed a large-scale rain garden, and they also constructed an access road with bio-retention bioswells. And the city received funding from DVRPC. We, I think there was CDBG and Coastal Zone Management to construct the levee walk. Ultimately, what that does is the stormwater management measures will help mitigate runoff, and the, the levee improvements ultimately provide us an access, number one, provides public access to the creek and also, you know, you know, brings, brings the residents to that area, but also allows us the maintenance to create the levee so that we can, you know, have, have better means of maintenance, long-term maintenance, so that we ultimately can mitigate the potential for a levee failure. Other areas in the city, there are also other areas in the city. Now, to name a, you know, that pretty much covers the areas that are specified in the report, but there are also, you know, multiple areas within the city that are within the one-hundred-year floodplain that I didn't necessarily target with the report, and they could be added in, they are referenced, but the map kind of details some of the areas that we looked at. And it's ultimately, any, any, any work, any one-hundred-year flood hazard, flooding that occurs due to the one-hundred-year storm is, is a, is a real, a regional effort, more than just a local effort. The city can put as much stormwater management in as we, we want. You still have the upstream flow that is causing the flooding downstream. But with that, I think that covers my presentation. The only thing I would say is that I hope council, I will, if council does not have a copy of the report, I'll make sure you, make sure you get a copy. And also, the fire department and any, any other entities that wish to get a copy prior to finalizing, I have no issue with having review and comment, period. And any comments you give me today, I'll definitely implement into the report. And that is essentially my presentation today.
Thank you, Mr. Galante, and as was stated to members of council, if they have any, well, if you have any comments, concerns at this point, you may speak on them now. If not, at a later date, we will provide you with some of our comments, concerns, and input. But thank you for a job well done, Mr. Galante.
Thank you. And I will note that the grant actually covers our time that we work on it, so any time that was spent, the city would get reimbursed for, and Asia as well.
Very good. We like reimbursements. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Mr. Solicitor, any public comments?
Yes, Your Honor, there was one public comment. May I read it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Subject for December twenty-third, twenty twenty, city council meeting. Hello. My name is Adrian Webster. I live at twenty-four oh seven Chestnut Street, Chester, PA one nine oh one three. Along with their telephone number, I'm writing in reference to the property located at twenty-four oh five Chestnut Street. I did hear at the previous city council meeting that the property located at twenty-four oh five Chestnut Street has been put on the demolition list with the county. I want to extend my deepest gratitude to all of the city officials involved in assisting my household and our community to remove this blighted property. Huge thanks to Mr. Galante for filing paperwork to expeditiously move this process forward. Thank you, Mr. Walker, who came out and posted the condemned sign on the property. I reflect on the many positive words spoken at the swearing-in ceremony, January sixth, twenty twenty, from Councilman William Morgan, who wants to make sure we keep sailing the boat in the right direction to Councilwoman Elizabeth Williams, who lived in Chester all her life, worked hard, and stated we are going up, as well as Mayor Kirkland, who acknowledged that he was blessed with the very best team of elected officials that anyone could hope for. I find comfort in Mayor Kirkland's sentiments that everyone is working on behalf of each and every citizen in the city of Chester. Teamwork makes the dream work. Agree one hundred percent. This is a commitment to making Chester the best number-one city, not just in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, but throughout the United States. I will do all I can as a Chester resident to assist in these goals. As my husband and I, as my husband and I continue to endure raccoons getting into our property, front room ceiling, front bedroom flooring, and porch roof, we hired the Delaware County Animal Control for trapping. Since November fourth, they've trapped thirteen raccoons. It's forty-six dollars and eighty cents each time they remove a trapped raccoon and rebate in addition to a hundred and fifty-nine dollars for initial setup. This is a financial hardship, but we have no other option. It's unbearable to sleep at night, hearing constant rustling of raccoons in my bedroom floor, but I know my city officials are working hard to eradicate this nuisance property. Is there any way to know when this property would be demolished? Is it three months, four months from it being mentioned at the previous council meeting or a later date? Please forgive me for my eagerness. If it seems excessive, we will continue being patient as you do all you can. Thank you, Adrian Webster.
Ms. Webster, let me just say, first of all, thank you for your patience, and thank you for being a member of the team. We know this has been a hardship for you, and we're working diligently and expeditiously as possible to make sure that we can remove that building that causes so many problems and brings so many creatures into your community and into your house. I will have a conversation with Mr. Galante. Soon as we talk with Mr. Galante, our city engineer, we'll find out when the demolition will begin, and we'll make sure that we reach out to you as soon as possible to let you know exactly when we're going to start. But once again, thank you for your patience, and thank you for your kind words, and don't stop, don't, don't stop reaching out to mayor and council about anything. Please, please continue working with us, you're part, you and your husband are part of our team. Thank you so very much. Mr. Solicitor.
Your Honor, that concludes public comment.
There was one more. It wasn't on this feed, but it was a public comment that was raised at the receivers' board meeting, which I sit, I sit on that board, and there was a public comment from Ms. Denise Mowgli. And I would like to respond to her public comments. I don't have them all in front of me, but I remember much of what she wrote and said, and she wanted a response, and I wanted to make sure I responded to her today. That was not the setting for me to respond, to respond to her, but this is. She started off, I think, she started off by saying something about the pay increases for mayor, for myself, and two, or two of the council persons, and Mrs. Blackwell. Let me, let me say this, Ms. Mowgli. First of all, there has not been an increase in pay for mayor and council for over twenty years. As a matter of fact, when we took office and prior to me being in the seat of mayor, there was the other administration, another administration, who purposely reduced all of council and the mayor's salaries for political purposes. That was unfortunate, but that's what they did. It seems that we have, some folks have short memories, and things like that occur, so I wanted to bring that back to your attention. So we brought our salaries up to twenty twenty. This was not done behind doors. It was not done in isolation, but what we had done, what we did, Ms. Mowgli, is we put it on the calendar, two readings, and it was done in twenty nineteen. The salaries came about in twenty twenty. And let me go a little further, take a little personal piece here as well. As you may or may not know, when I became mayor, I did not take a salary. I was working two jobs, a state representative and mayor, and I did not take a salary. Sure, state law says, no, you can only get one salary. However, I worked two jobs. I did not take a salary, nor did I take healthcare for four years. These members of council and myself work extremely hard each and every day. You also said something about part-time work, part-time mayor and part-time council. Well, Ms. Mowgli, if you know anything about city council and myself, we work seven days a week. If it was an eighth day in there, we'd probably work eight days a week. But right now, we work seven days a week. And there are times, because you were at a couple of those meetings, there were times when we had night meetings, and sometimes those night meetings, when we have town hall meetings, when we weren't in a pandemic, would run for three hours, sometimes three hours plus. But the council members and myself were there each and every time to address the issues of our community. So, no, 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 we, we don't work part-time. We're full-time each and every day. You also asked the question about what are we doing to aid our schools and our daycares concerning the pandemic. I'll talk a little more about that as we get further into this as well, because this is why I need my Director of Health. We have provided education, information to our schools. The daycares are state-mandated. They receive their information from the state as well as the city. All we can do is educate and encourage folks to do those things that will keep them safe. Washing of the hands, coughing in the elbow, wearing a mask, social distancing. As you know, most of our schools, I don't know of any of our schools that are right now, that are basically having classes in person. And so, that issue right there takes care of itself. We've been working with our school districts, our school district, and we've been working with our students, and we've been working with our families to inform them and educate them about this deadly disease pandemic. And we hope that folks will simply use a little bit of common sense, common sense that will help them protect themselves, their families, and others. I hope that I have covered all of your concerns and your questions. Please feel, feel free, please feel free to contact my office at any time, at any time, with any further information that you might need. I have an open-door policy. Because of the pandemic, it has made things a little difficult for everyone. But I appreciate your questions. I appreciate your concern, and I hope you appreciate my response. Thank you. Are there any other public comments, Mr. Solicitor?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. So, I, I would like to address Chester community at this time, so I'm going to ask if council members will join me. I, I wanted to gather and sit with our team, members of council, to address issues in our community and speak directly to the Chester community. No, I'm, I'm not going to go on a podcast. And I'm not going to, at the end of the podcast, say vulgar words or language, especially when there is a child on that same podcast. But I do want you to hear from us as the elected officials here in this community. And I do want you to hear factual information. First of all, let me thank you, Councilwoman West, and Councilwoman. and Councilwoman Williams for doing what you do every year when it snows. Every year, you team up, you work together and you get the job done. I want to thank you for making our streets clear, clear of snow. For some strange reason, I was watching a podcast and there was a person on the podcast that said, that gave the credit, if you will, to the receiver and a member of his team. That credit belongs to you and I want to thank you both for working hard and making sure that our streets were clear and clean. You've been doing it for the past nine years. I think you have a, some sense of experience in doing what you do and I appreciate that. I also want to say, because folks like to take credit and maybe it's because we don't blow to our own horns, blow our own whistles, push our own buttons. But there's an awful lot of work that is done, been done by we have this administration and prior to me. For the last five years, myself, then commissioner, then commissioner, prior to that, after that, it's Commissioner Blair, and now it's Commissioner Gretzky. During my five years here at council, we have always had the state police here in the city of Chester. It did not just happen. Just wanted to start off by saying factual, factual, factual information. We've been doing this and we will continue to do the work of the people. You know, I, I, I got a call back in May, maybe early June. This is when the pandemic hit. When the pandemic hit, it hurt us. It hurt our community. It hurt us financially. It hurt us physically. It even hurt us mentally. We did not know that the pandemic was going to wreak the kind of havoc that it's wreaking, not just in our community, but throughout this world. But it, it has and it continues to. But when that happened, I received a call, factual information. I received a call from the governor of Pennsylvania, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Governor Wolf. And on that call was Secretary Dab and Secretary of DCD. Also on that call was Director Kim Brace. And as we began to talk, they understood that we had been devastated because of the closure of the casino. The casino is a financial lifeline to this community, but the casino had to shut down. They called and they said, we want to help. We want to partner. We want to come in and roll up our sleeves and help Chester get back on its financial feet. That's what they told me. And I was excited. They said, we want to partner and I was excited. And so I welcomed them. We welcomed them with open arms. They said, not only are we coming with experience, not only are we coming with uh, technical assistance, but they mentioned fifteen million dollars. Fifteen million dollars of financial help. These are not things you make up or a number that you pull out of the sky. This was the conversation with the governor of Pennsylvania, Secretary DCD and Director Brace and probably some others on the phone line as well. And so we were excited because they were coming to help and they were coming to partner. Well, something must have happened along the way because partnerships don't turn into dictatorships. We appreciate partnerships. But right now, that's not what, what is happening. When you talk about partnerships, you don't go onto a podcast or any other place and take a document that says confidential draft, confidential, 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 and share it with everyone else when you're supposedly dealing with negotiations. We're supposed to be going back and, back and forth and consulting one another and, and working with one another to make sure we get the right mix and the right blend when it comes to working within city government. That's what partnerships do. They work together. Well, this one kind of fell apart. And I just want to run through some names because I believe it's important that you put a name, face with a name. Because these are real people. I won't name everybody, but I'll name some, some of the folks in. At a later date, we'll get everyone else involved, but I just want to name a few people. Because right now, these are the people that have helped us get this far, nine years in, ten years in, experienced folk who get the job done. But for some strange reason, unbeknownst to me in this council, these same experienced persons are now being asked to leave. They are now being asked to exit the building. Their jobs are in question. And so I'm going to give you some names and then I'm going to tell you a little bit about what they do, because I think that's important. Ronald Starr, Chief of Staff for Mayor and Council. Livia Smith, Health Director in our Health Department. Wow. We're in a pandemic. Real good time to get rid of your health director. Mr. Dow Jones, our Building Director, person that helps keep this building together. They're changing some people like Mr. Dwayne Lee, who, they want to change his position. Someone who has worked in our parks and our recreation and not only our parks and recreation, but other areas throughout this administration. Mr. Peter Riker, our Planning Director. Now I want to give them another title, not even exactly sure what it is, because all I saw was initials. Mr. Thomas White, our Community Outreach Person, person that touches base physically with our community and brings communities together rather than have them tugging at each other. Elimination of the Office of Liaison, Ms. Lisa Dennis and Company. These are names and real people and I, I think it's important that you hear this. Elimination of several of our administrative assistants. The young ladies who work hard and make sure that our schedules are right and work hard in connecting with our employees. Talented, experienced young ladies. Elimination of our Legal Secretary, Ms. Janice Lamb. How do you run a legal office without a legal secretary? It, it just kind of blows my mind. Elimination of several other positions. And you know what the weird thing about all of that is? Eliminate all of that. And none of this does anything to address the pension problem. However, if the governor and his team would have provided us with that fifteen million dollars, that would adjust the problem and we still have our people in place. Let me just share with you a little bit. I'm not going to read them all, but I think it's important that you hear some of them success stories and how important these folks are here, not just to us, but to the Chester community. Ronald Starr, Chief of Staff. Ron helped initiate the, the city's police mobile app and they put it in the hands of Joy Taylor. And Joy implemented the project. He stopped management from receiving overtime. When we got here, managers were getting overtime. Persons who were salary persons who were making forty-five thousand dollars were getting up to a hundred thousand dollars in pay for overtime. He saw that and moved to eliminate that. He terminated a contract with Frank Attanya Engineering and brought in Remington, Vernon and Beach. And this saved the city thousands of dollars. He had Mr. Knox, Richard Knox in the streets cross-trained to do deeds so we could uh, do away with um, Lee Franklin's position after he retired. This also saved the city about fifty thousand dollars. The list goes on and on and on. What I like most about the fact is not only is Ron Starr the Chief of Staff, but he created a business in downtown Chester and encouraged other businesses to come down down Chester and hire Chester folk. What is so wrong with that? Chester folk working in Chester. Ms. Livia Smith. Livia came to the city administration in twenty fourteen. She's been here all of her life. But she came here to create structure to the, to the department. Prior to her coming, all personnel were doing what we call their own thing with no accountability. Some of her changes were modified, job descriptions and creating a daily report for all employees who perform outside inspections. Her position as Municipal Health Services Director provides leadership for the direction of public health services and reports directly to Councilman William Al Jacobs' squad. She's responsible for the day-to-day staff, the day-to-day operations and oversees the work of four directors and offers supervisory assistance to the uh, seventeen other staff members. And the list goes on and on and on. Someone who has committed themselves to helping others right here in this city. And now we're trying, now receivers team is saying, even in the midst of a pandemic, that position's not needed. Talked to you about Mr. Lee, Lee supervises staff landscaping, scheduling, maintenance for parks. Trains our, helps in training of our lifeguards, affords our young people to get opportunities, job opportunities here in our city. Provides them with wholesome, wholesome and healthy recreational opportunity here in our city. And guess what? We're not going to be in this pandemic forever. The kids are going to be ready. Their families are going to be ready. They're going to want to come back out and they want to engage in with one another. And if we're not ready for them, then we have failed. That's why we need, not only that, I watched Mr. Lee throw pots of food from month after month after month after month after month, forty-four thousand, forty-four thousand, after month. And now to say to someone, thanks, but no thanks, that's only not fair. That's wrong. That's wrong. Michael Hurst, hmm, Michael Hurst, Deputy Finance Director. This position is an important part of the city's accounting department and completing the financial audits. Completing the financial audits, completing the financial audits, directing the team on tasks and deadlines to meet the needs of the department. Currently, this physician has the most knowledge of the city's finances and working through to become current with all financial audits. Mike Hurst works in this building sometimes to three o'clock in the morning. These are facts, not fiction. City Planning, Mr. Riker. The Planning Director position is responsible for directing and coordinating planning functions of the city. Oversees the recruitment, employment, valuation and release of staff and contract personnel. Supervises all department staff, develops department-wide goals, objectives, policies and procedures, prepares department operations budget, ensures that the council and mayor is kept fully informed on the condition of the department about any trends, events or emerging issues of significance to the department's success. City Planning. Mr. Riker has, is not only city planner, but he has a team. A team that is needed in order for those persons who want to invest in the city of Chester. They will come and they will meet with Mr. Riker and his team. And they would do their presentation. And Mr. Riker will inform mayor and council and work along with us to make sure that we can bring these businesses in this community. And guess what? I watched Mr. Riker and Mr. Starr coordinate and work with each other as you see brand-new businesses downtown. You know, I heard somebody the other day. I heard him. They said, watch, all they're going to do is fix up downtown or over town. Wouldn't that be nice? If we get all of our over town, our downtown businesses open, up and running, just like every other community? There's nothing wrong with that. Everything is right with that. And the list goes on and on and on. We're in this position because of a pandemic. Because of a pandemic. And with the help of some folk, with the help of the state, some financial help and with it, with the help of the state working with us concerning the pensions. We can move forward. There are some plans on the table. There's some plans on the table. All we have to do is work together and make it happen. There's another twelve million dollar plan on the table, on the table. That if we work with certain individuals essential, that money could be used to help the city of Chester, twelve million dollars, right now. Not tomorrow, not next week, but right now. And so we thought it important to come to you, Chester community, and tell the truth. This mayor and council have been working their butts off all through the pandemic. Non-stop. This used to be a place where we can come in and you, you're just excited about coming to work and working with one another. But when you see some of your colleagues and your friends and your neighbors who are now laid off and there's an opportunity for them to come back because the finances are there if we just take the leap, there is an opportunity for them to come back. But that's to come for the receiver. Let me say this in closing. Mr. Receiver, Mr. Governor, Mr. Director, Mr. Secretary, commitment was made. You spoke of partnership. That's what we like to do. We like to partner in the rebuilding of our community and our staff. I'll say this in closing, say one other thing. The receiver and Mr. Kapoor said that they wanted to make sure that as you come into Chester, the gateways, that they look real nice. They talked about when they came into the city of Chester and one of the clothing bins had clothes all outside of it. And the two of them rolled up their sleeves, cleaned up the mess. We appreciate it. We really, really do. Just so you know, my daughter cleaned up that same bin by herself a couple of weeks before. Just so you know, there are folks within the city hall who clean on and off ramps to the highway by themselves, because we wanted to make our city look good. And this administration went so far as to remove those clothing bins because they were not healthy, they were unsafe. So let's do partnerships. If we're serious about this thing, and we're serious about working with this mayor and council and with this community and with these, with these staff persons, let's roll up our sleeves and do what we promised each other. Let's partner. Let's partner. Let's not be petty. Speaking of petty, this one is for you, Ms. Moby. You had mentioned our salaries. It is what it is. You've mentioned our salaries. But not one time has anyone asked, what are the salaries of the individuals who the state sent here? Not one person asked. And I guarantee you, if that money would have went into the city of Chester, we'd be better off right now. So rather than, rather than attack and beat up on your own, there's some other questions that need to be asked. There's some other questions that need to be asked. And when you start asking those questions and we start getting answers to those questions, that is our opportunity to move forward. That is our opportunity to work as a team, and that is our opportunity to make Chester a better place. We're not going to stop working. We'll keep doing what we've done for the past nine years in some cases, and five in office. We're going to keep on serving the people. With that said, thank you for your patience, Chester community. Thank you for your listening here. And receiver dowry, Mr. Kapoor, Director Brace. Look forward to working with you and look forward to real partnerships. This meeting is now adjourned.